Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is May twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. My name is Mike Kelly. I'm the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. We are here for today's meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Aye.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I'm here. All are present. Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. If you'd join me in checking your cellphone or any other noise-making device that you may have brought with you here today and making sure that it's turned to silent or turned off, we appreciate your cooperation. We'll start today with the public comment portion of our agenda. It's an opportunity for speakers to address commission business that does not otherwise appear on today's agenda. If you wish to speak on an action item, we do ask that you register with that action item, and if you talk about that action item during this general public comment session, we'll ask that you refrain at this time. When you do come to the dais, we ask you to state your name and the community in which you reside. Comments are limited to two minutes. There's a clock that'll appear to assist you with that time limit. If you happen to go beyond the two-minute time limit, I'm required to ask you that you conclude your comments. We do ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are personally offensive, impertinent, profane, or slanderous, and please refrain from the use of offensive or indic- indecorous language that would insult or demean any person. If we stray into that kind of public comment, we'll provide a warning. If it continues, we'll ask that you step aside from the dais. We do take public comments virtually, so we'll start by calling on our virtual commentators in the order that they registered. Will the Clerk let me know when we are ready to call or if we have the virtual public commentators with us this morning?
I do not see anyone in there.
Okay, then we'll move on to our in-person public commentators. We'll start with Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. Chairman Kelly and Commissioners, I would like to correct an error. My comments of May eighth and May twenty-two concerning your illegal sales tax ballot proposition, I mistakenly omitted subsection parents (small b) close parents when referencing KSA twelve dash one eighty-seven citations. Each should read KSA twelve dash one eighty-seven parents (small b) close parents, parents twenty-one close parents, and KSA twelve dash one eighty-seven parents (b) close parents, parents five close parents where applicable. For the record, I provide the Clerk with a single copy of each of the corrected comments attached to the original comments with the erroneous citations. This does not change any analysis which I presented on those dates. I reaffirm and stand behind those analyses. With regard to the courthouse public safety project placed on the general election ballot of November eighth, two thousand sixteen, and the prior public safety sales tax ballot propositions of nineteen ninety-four and two thousand eight, I present a Cora Act request for... One, those resolutions and propositions. Two, a reconciliation and accounting of funds received and dispersed with respect to the courthouse project account and parents (three close parents), and accounting of general revenue sources of Johnson County in annual budgeting and annual reports for the years two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-five inclusive. I note that the agenda packet for the September sixth, two thousand seven B O C C meeting at which resolution zero six eight dash zero seven for the quarter cent retailer sales tax adopted in two thousand eight is missing on your website. A fellow citizen recently forwarded to me a factoid that Johnson County sales tax rates are higher than ninety-eight percent of the counties in the United States. I remember starting the practice of law and by my recollection, most county sales tax rates were in the area of five percent. A six percent rate was unusual. The continual escalation of these cumulative rates really hits the middle class and the poor. Nine percent to eleven percent rates in Johnson County are not exactly a testament to fiscal responsibility and restraint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart. Next is Brian Perkins.
Good morning. Brian Perkins here. I currently reside in Olathe, Kansas. I want to touch on safety today. Over the past month, I received texts from folks, friends of mine from Project N20, asking for if I knew a safe place to sleep. It shouldn't get to that point. It shouldn't be to the point where we're asking, like, our group is asking each other where we're gonna stay, where we're gonna sleep, what is safe. Someone specifically, her name is Gail, she asked, where is a safe place to sleep? Does bus stops running? And I looked, and I'm like, holy cow. Like, what do I do? So I looked, and she said she had collagen flum, she needs access to a twenty-four-hour bathroom. So I kinda, I told her, I said, this is where I would go. It's off the street, it's in a parking lot, it's kinda far enough away, but you're close to the QuickTrip. This gentleman named Don, and let me tell you, this dude is the best. This dude is a schoolteacher for your county, and he brings the light to all of us at ten twenty. He brings fun in the midst of what we're going through. He brings life. And this man is still asking for places to sleep. Where are we gonna stay? How do I do this? How do I get there? But he does it. He does it with fun, he does it with positivity. I mean, it's just, it's really cool to see, but it shouldn't be to the point where I'm literally asking each other, where are we gonna sleep? Where are we gonna stay? Dave's getting out of the hospital soon. His twenty days is almost up from his surgery, his rehabilitation. He forgot about his own health. I went there to see him. He was so scared about his housing, he forgot about his own health. This man was asking, what do I do? I, I need to get a place to sleep. We're all residents of Johnson County. All of our safety matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlotte O'Hara.
Charlotte O'Hara, Johnson County. Good morning. Again, I ask, what value do these books that are compiled in the Moms for Liberty Parental Guide, what value do these books bring to our children? These books are grooming tools, and here we have, just in the last couple of days, in the Wall Street Journal, fool around and find out, about two hundred and fifty-five adults arrested for child pornography, prostitution, et cetera, et cetera. The most shocking thing was the list of people, not names, but walks of life, the last paragraph. The suspects include active Navy, thirteen veterans, a medical doctor, engineers, insurance brokers and agents, regional vice president of a timeshare, Walmart store manager, party planner, IT database guy for the federal government, crane operators, business owners, and in the middle medical field, R and C and A, medical techs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is an epidemic, and with books like this in our public library that are deemed appropriate for our children and in our school libraries is nothing but pouring gasoline on the fire. The other issue that I wanted to talk about is that this is the second week that there are no action agenda items. District Commissioners, you are being diminished to be simply figureheads. You are not in the power structure of this county, it's obvious, and I really urge you to reclaim your responsibilities. Thank you.
All right. Did our virtual public commenter come online?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll circle back and call on Leo Kayet, then.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Great. I'm gonna be quick and to the point, and I really appreciate Brian Perkins' statements in person this morning. I thought that's something extremely important. My understanding is that the Board of County Commissioners was concerned that I didn't speak to you guys last week, because I've been speaking to you guys for several years now, since approximately May two thousand twenty-three, if I recall correctly. Honestly, I don't mind speaking to you guys, but I have better things to do as well. So given that you guys are concerned, I would strongly encourage you guys to speak to Peg Trent urgently about a Tenth Circuit Court opinion called Tripot v. Beaman, nineteen eighty-nine. My understanding is it's been upheld over a thousand times across the United States and never once, never once challenged in the manner that five separate judges of Johnson County, or more likely their staff, have disregarded it for several years now. Mrs. Trent's been aware of that for many, many months. She's continuing to manipulate representations on behalf of your commission in Kansas Supreme Court case one-two-eight-nine-oh-five, but she knows what's going on. Number two, I have had calls recently with Johnson County Sheriff's Office deputies Gonzalez and Boland, both of whom who told me to walk inside the court to report crime. There's, of course, crime happening at the Johnson County District Courthouse. I can't report it, because the last time I went there, Officer, Officer arrested me for opening up the front door to a courthouse, which is, of course, insane. However, Earlton Park Police Officer Gum told me two Saturdays ago to continue reporting stuff to the county. Shortly after that, an ambulance and a fire truck were dispatched. I would also add that I have rights under KSA seventy-four dash seventy-three thirty-three. You probably want to discuss that with Heather Peg, because I doubt anybody else on the list has received directions from the FBI headquarters in Washington, D.C., directly affecting statutes that this Commissioners are responsible for. There's additional crimes that have been reported this morning. In addition, a crime by James Bruin. Law enforcement is very concerned about Attorney TC Pendleton and continued to give me instructions, and I apologize for the delay in my comments, because the Mission Police Department emailed me this morning as I was preparing my comments regarding one of your directors with the Johnson County Mental Health Center.
Mr. Kayet, thank you for your comment. All right, that's the, that's all the public commenters that have registered today. We have no notes from the record, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as printed, Commissioner Hanslick?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Allenbrand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allenbrand. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
Very good. We'll move on at this time to a management report from our deputy county manager, Ms. Julie Karens.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The first item is the County Economic Research Institute, otherwise known as CRI indicators report, which is attached to the memo. Some highlights, in March of two thousand twenty-five, the unemployment rate actually rose to three point six percent compared to two point eight percent the previous year. Year-to-date, single-family home sales are up seven percent, and single-family building permits are up fourteen percent. The total retail sales for Johnson County through February of two thousand twenty-five were three point oh four billion dollars, and it's a point five percent increase from the same time last year. The second item is, we wanted to recognize and congratulate the Johnson County employees who participated in the leadership class hosted through our chambers. So each year, as you're aware, many of our area chambers hold leadership classes where participants get in-depth information on school districts, local governments, nonprofits, healthcare systems, and other organizations within their communities. It's also a fantastic networking opportunity. Students also learn leadership principles and best practices for the benefit of the organizations in which they work. The chambers, the classes do come together a few times a year, including for County Government Day, where we have the opportunity to showcase our programs and services. The photo on the screen is from our county day and includes several of the two thousand twenty-five Johnson County employees who participated this year. We have Josh Schoenheffer from the airport, Jeff Vos from Public Works, Tony Barron from Facilities, Michelle Alexander from JCPRD, Lee Kellenberger from Public Works, Eric Nelson from Department of Health, Dan Robison, Department of Emergency Services, Deborah Addig, Department of Emergency Services, Brent Christensen from FMA, and Kayla Holloway, who's not pictured, from Human Resources. And that includes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Karens. Any questions on the report? All right, seeing none. This time, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. We'll, I'm sorry. We have one other report. Thank you very much, Commissioner, and that is the Southwest Metro Area Transportation Connection Plan update. Brian Pedig here to present that. Mr. Pedig, welcome back.
Good morning. We'll pull our presentation up here and I'll get started. remember, about a year ago, the Board approved a study of the area around the Astra Enterprise Park. We recognized that development's coming. Panasonic is just the first, I think, of some major players that are coming, and today is an update of that study and the next steps that we plan on having. So this is the original carnet map, and I want to take just a few minutes to get us all started on the same page of what transportation planning is in the county. And the county recognized that we're growing eight to ten thousand people a year. We needed some type of plan, so in nineteen ninety-nine, they adopted the carnet plan, Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan. It's a mouthful. And, and of particular note is the northwest area that I've highlighted. They shaded a lot of those areas. They couldn't determine where those corridors should go, and they left that for future study. The county did study that, and they established a one hundred and eleventh street corridor from county line to Olathe city limits, and then an off-section line, Kill Creek Corridor. There is also an additional corridor that runs north-south through the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant, and the thought was to study that later when that area starts to develop, which is now. So it's appropriate that we're looking at that. Carnet does several things, and it establishes a hierarchy of arterial roads that provide access and traffic, an ability for traffic to move across the county. Those are designated as type ones, twos, and threes. Type one is the lowest carrier traffic, type three the highest carrier traffic. And what that allows the county to do is assign right-ofway to those various corridors and provide setbacks. And you might see when planning comes up here, they're talking about access management, how many entrances, and we're gonna have a little further discussion on access management, because that's really key and important to moving traffic efficiently. So carnet preserves options. That allows us, as areas develop, as they annex and they come to urban densities, we can then have the right-ofway and the access management that allows us to put in the appropriate infrastructure. It also informs the public as to what's going on. Not only people that live there, but people looking at living in the unincorporated area, or businesses looking at developing in this area, or cities looking at annexing. This is that plan that they can work with, and it is a plan. It's not a construction document. That's a whole different discussion how we approve construction projects. So here's a great diagram that illustrates the differences between type one, two, and three designation in the carnet plan, type one being the lowest, and you can see there are more entrances. That's at the top of the page. The street intersection spacing is a little close together. Type two, fewer entrances, farther spacing, and then finally type three, where you have very few entrances on the roads, and then you have intersection spacing, that's typically at the mile and a half mile. And a really good example to have in your head as we talk through this is Santa Fe right out in front. And if you, you look at that, that was developed when they really didn't have a lot of access management, and there are curb cuts literally every fifty feet, and then there are street intersections every quarter or eighth mile or, or even closer than that. And as you have peak traffic, it's difficult to move traffic efficiently across that section of the city. You contrast that further east with one hundred and thirty-fifth street, maybe in the US sixty-nine area in Overland Park, where they have fairly strict access management. The intersections are the mile and a half mile, and if there are entrances, they're right in, right out, and you can move a lot of traffic with that. So that's why it's important to study. That's why it's important to assign these designations, so you know what needs to happen as this area develops and have a plan for it. So here's an area of Western Johnson County, and again, I've highlighted the Astra Enterprise Park area, and the major effort here is to reconnect that area with the rest of the county and establish a connection via a north-south corridor that links K-ten to one hundred and fifty-first street. That's the primary goal of this study. In nineteen forty-one, when that plant opened, they truncated the east, the south, and the west side of the plant, the arterial roads that went through there. The only axis is on the north side. That north-south corridor that carnet identified, it's now appropriate to find and, and see where that should be running. And then what we want to do is look at the surrounding area. What tweaks and modifications to carnet do we need to do? And specifically, that would be, look at that one hundred and eleventh and that off-section line, Kill Creek Corridor. How does that work? Do we need to make modifications? And then look at the surrounding area. What modifications to carnet do we need to make? What should cities be thinking about in their transportation plans? That's what the scope of this study, with the major part being the reconnection of the Astra Enterprise Park. So the study was headed by a core team, and that was KDOT, Johnson County, and the City of DeSoto, the thought being that KDOT is the regional provider of traffic, and that's mostly through K-ten. They have an important role here, that DeSoto has the development in Astra Enterprise Park, and that the county surrounds Astra Enterprise Park. So how are those areas going to integrate and coordinate together? And then the study is also supplemented with the, I'm gonna try and get rid of that, with the surrounding entities and cities. And that technical team played a key part in providing recommendations and information as we went forward with the study. So the first thing the consultant did was meet with each of these entities and go through what their transportation plans are, to look at, what are your thoughts on annexation and developments in this county area that surrounds the Astra Enterprise Park? And the general consensus was, this area is going to be difficult to sewer. There are a lot of floodplain issues. We see low levels of development, if not no interest in annexing or developing it. So that plays a key role when we talk about recommendations here in a minute, that not a lot is seen going forward. We also had significant coordination with the Johnson County Parks and Rec, which I would assume you're familiar with, the thought that there's going to be some major park developments that I think are going to be the gem of not just Johnson County, but of this entire region that they're going to develop. I've gotten to walk that with the parks, and it's impressive what they're planning on doing. So I'm gonna skip right to the recommendations. This is an update, and when we talk about reconnecting, it's somewhat straightforward, and that it's gonna be the existing section line roads. And on the west side, that's one hundred and nineteenth, one hundred and twenty-seventh, one hundred and thirty-fifth are gonna reconnect with Astra Enterprise Park. On the east side, that's one hundred and twenty-seventh, and then one hundred and thirty-fifth, and you can see that's gonna swag a little bit as it works around some of the existing facilities that are in that area. Then the north-south route would start on Evening Star, move about a mile east inside Astra Enterprise Park, and then connect with Edgerton Road. That's about ninety percent of the study. That's the thrust of the study, which is how do we reconnect and how are we gonna move traffic in this area? So looking at the surrounding areas, we have the off-section line, Kill Creek Road. When we looked at the traffic, when we looked at coordinating with DeSoto, the recommendation is to remove that route and put it on the existing Kill Creek, one hundred and fifteenth, and Waverly Road, and reduce that to a two-lane road. One hundred and eleventh street, which was establishing carnet as a four-lane, the thought being is to recommend reducing that to a two-lane. When we look at south of this plant, we see something a little different. You'll see we have KCPL, KCLP, which is the Kansas City Logistics Park. That's the developments in Edgerton with the warehousing in Burlington Northern. We have the New Century Air Center that you've seen significant development. We have Edgerton and Gardner that have grown tremendously in the past few years, and we see a north-south connection that will need to go along Four Corners and Moonlight Road. So recommendations on increasing those designations. The same thought with one hundred and forty-third street, which is already existing and connects across the county, would provide a connection between Douglas County, Astra Enterprise Park, and Olathe, and increasing those designations. And then carnet years ago saw this intersection of Dilly and one hundred and fifty-first street as a major connection. We are not seeing that, and we are recommending redesigning those lower from a type three to a type one. So those are the designations that we're seeing in the recommendations coming from this study. We've shared these with the team, and, and you might recall when we talked about the study, we discussed public involvement. And the thought was, let's do public involvement when we have some information. Doing a public involvement at the very beginning, when you really don't have anything, doesn't add much value. So it's time now to do that, and we plan on a public open house in a couple weeks that will be at the City of DeSoto. We are working on getting that information out so the public's aware of it and can attend. They will see the same information. They can talk with staff. We'll have a, a frequently asked questions available that explains a lot of these thoughts about carnet and what that is. And then we will, will have the same presentation with the Johnson County Planning Commission on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, and then the consideration, the updating of carnet will be this fall. That's when we'll bring these recommendations, and that will be part of the Planning Department's annual update of their comprehensive plan. Carnet is a document that's included in there. So there's where we'll have more detailed discussion, and we can go through some of these corridors, alignments, and recommendations in detail, if you like. So a lot of information, but what it is, that's, that's a sneak peek of what we're gonna be showing the public here in a couple of weeks. You might get some calls on it, but the recommendations, we feel, are fairly straightforward and make some sense. So we look forward to that public open house and then continuing this process of updating our carnet plan. So Kip and I are here, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Mr. Pedig, and just to confirm the June eleventh open house, will it be similar to our budget open houses, where you have various graphics, folks who might be able to talk through as opposed to a presentation style, or have you determined how that open house will be formatted?
Yes, well said. It's an open house, so it's come at any time. There's not a presentation. We will have boards available that have this information, so folks can stand around, look at, and ask questions about. Again, staff will be available. Public, I should say, will be able, will have an ability to leave comments. We'll collate those comments, and then when we go forward and we talk about these recommendations, we'll share those comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. So remind me, when did the original carnet program go into place?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
That's what I thought.
When we look at south of this plant, we see something a little different. You'll see we have KCPL, KCLP, which is the Kansas City Logistics Park. That's the developments in Edgerton with the warehousing in Burlington Northern. We have the New Century Air Center that you've seen significant development. We have Edgerton and Gardner that have grown tremendously in the past few years, and we see a north-south connection that will need to go along Four Corners and Moonlight Road. So recommendations on increasing those designations. The same thought with 143rd Street, which is already existing and connects across the county, would provide a connection between Douglas County, Astra Enterprise Park, and Olathe, and increasing those designations. And then Carnap, years ago, saw this intersection of Dilly and 151st Street as a major connection. We are not seeing that, and we are recommending redesigning those lower from a type three to a type one. So those are the designations that we're seeing and the recommendations coming from this study. We've shared these with the team, and you might recall when we talked about the study, we discussed public involvement. And the thought was, let's do public involvement when we have some information. Doing a public involvement at the very beginning, when you really don't have anything, doesn't add much value. So it's time now to do that. And we plan on a public open house in a couple weeks that will be at the City of DeSoto. We are working on getting that information out so the public's aware of it and can attend. They will see the same information, they can talk with staff. We'll have a frequently asked questions available that explains a lot of these thoughts about Carnap and what that is. And then we will have the same presentation with the Johnson County Planning Commission on Tuesday, June 24th. And then the consideration, the updating of Carnap will be this fall. That's when we'll bring these recommendations, and that will be part of the Planning Department's annual update of their comprehensive plan. Carnap is a document that's included in there. So there's where we'll have more detailed discussion, and we can go through some of these corridors alignments and recommendations in detail, if you like. So a lot of information, but what it is, that's a sneak peek of what we're going to be showing the public here in a couple weeks. You might get some calls on it, but the recommendations, we feel, are fairly straightforward and make some sense. So we look forward to that public open house and then continuing this process of updating our Carnap Plan. So Kip and I are here, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Mr. Pedig. And just to confirm the June 11th open house, will it be similar to our budget open houses, where you have various graphics, folks who might be able to talk through, as opposed to a presentation style? Or have you determined how that open house will be formatted?
Yes, well said. It's an open house, so it's come at any time. There's not a presentation. We will have boards available that have this information, so folks can stand around, look at, and ask questions about. Again, staff will be available. Public, I should say, will be able, will have an ability to leave comments. We'll collate those comments, and then when we go forward and we talk about these recommendations, we'll share those comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. So remind me, when did the original Carnap program go into place?
1999.
That's what I thought, because I just want to commend, you know, starting that early, and, you know, the county and KDOT and the cities actually looking at an overall plan. And when I first got elected, I would get calls about development going on, and we looked at aims and looked at all the land that was owned by different developers under cattle names. So, you know, clear back then, I think people went in knowing that possibility of growth was going to happen. I also want to applaud you and your staff, KDOT, and also the cities, for the participation of all the people that were involved in it, not only going out into the community and meeting with homeowners associations, but also having meetings where you invited the different cities and taking the maps. You know, that was, you know, a fun event that you did with, you know, pinpointing where the congestion is and doing all that research. So I guess what I want to say to my fellow commissioners, I can't tell you how much work has gone into this program, you know, looking at the future study, HNTB, all the people that were involved in putting this together, and then now going out to the public. I just, I can't applaud them enough, and it's important to have this communication so that we know what's going on. So I'm sorry you're retiring, and so you're going to be greatly missed. I keep trying to talk him into staying a little bit longer, but I'm not sure it's working. But anyway, thank you for all your work, and also to everyone else over there.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just to follow on to Commissioner Allen Brand, Mr. Pedig, do you anticipate being here in the fall of 2025?
I hope not.
So who will be assuming your role on this matter?
Mr. Voez, our engineering manager, who's been up on this throughout the process and is very capable.
Okay, very good. And Commissioner Allen Brand, if you want to make a motion in terms of maintaining his tenure, I'll be glad to say.
I think he's going to veto that.
Commissioner Brewer, then Commissioner Hansel.
Just a couple. First of all, I too, I can't imagine having these conversations without you, so that's going to be tough. So thank you for, you've been wonderful in my own education, coming up to speed, as has been your team. So just kudos to you guys. Just a couple questions. I just happen to have been out on Moonlight Road this past weekend doing some biking on some trail, Johnson County trails out that way. So when I think about some of the maps you showed, one, I appreciate that you are constantly reevaluating and saying, hey, what may have made it make sense years ago with how things have evolved no longer makes sense. So I'm, that continuous improvement model, I really appreciate. But I'm thoughtful about some of those roads where you do have people exiting on long driveways out of those roads. Were those folks, how are they involved when it impacts people who have land, who exit on those roads, who will be changing?
I, just to make sure I'm understanding the question, do you mean when we go to construction, we're building things, how do we involve them?
How do you, how, like, for instance, the open house, will those, would there be any notification process for residents who are directly impacted on the roadways that are being changed?
I see.
Because that's how they exit out of their, out of their land, be it a farm, be it a home, be it, you know, that, because more development's happening out that way.
Correct.
So I'm just wanting to understand.
The notification process has changed significantly in my tenure. It used to be you mailed folks. And then as internet came out, people started ignoring their mail. So we use an extensive internet process. We have already publicized this on the county webpage. We've put next-door posts out, which get to people. We hope word of mouth gets there. We have found if we use mailings, they typically get ignored, people throw them away. So it is done through the internet, is how we notify folks.
Awesome. And then when you were showing the maps on converging streets from maybe a type one to type two and beyond, so I'm thoughtful of, as development continues to grow an unincorporated area, it seems like we've gotten better at baking in, making sure easement opportunities are there pre-existing, so in case that road does have to change from a type one, two, three, to four, that we've already acquired the necessary land if we're going to grow a potential road. Is that, is that a correct interpretation of how we try to approach some of that stuff that's happening in the unincorporated area?
So the right-of-way in the county, it's interesting, is only 40 feet. It's what the settlers originally dedicated, and that's largely what we have out there. What Carnap does, it says, if you develop, if you build a house, you need to consider these future improvements and set it back. So we can't correct anything in the past, and we do not have an aggressive program where we're going out buying right-of-way. It's as development comes, it's opportunistic. That's when we look to Carnap and we say, what should the right-of-way, the setbacks, the access management be?
So Carnap is kind of informing our go-forward in these relationships?
Yes, it's used by the Planning Department to develop the regulations. So as development comes, we have the appropriate regulations in place.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hansel.
Thank you. Thanks for the report, I really appreciate that. Just a logistics question. When the presentation is made to the Planning Commission on June 24th, at that time, are they being asked to approve it? And then does it come back to the board here for a final approval? Or is the approval internal to Public Works?
No, the approval is the board's.
Okay.
These are just recommendations. And the presentation to the Planning Commission is similar to this. It's just to inform you of what we're doing with the recommendations. The Planning Commission doesn't really have an approval role in this, that it's really, will lie with the board. And when we go through that comprehensive plan update that planning does every year, Carnap is in that document, and that's where we will then bring those recommendations and show you those changes and ask you to consider those for approval.
I appreciate that. I was under the impression it was a separate procedure, so helpful to know. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay. Seeing no further reports on the agenda, we'll move to a commissioner's comment. We'll start down with Commissioner Allen Brand today.
Thank you, Chair. Well, on Tuesday, out on the road trip with Mr. Norris, just meeting with the different cities, so we had a meeting with Edgerton and the Dryers Farm Project of homes being built. There's a possibility of over 200 homes there, and they have five under contract and under construction now. Total workforce in Edgerton is 5,000, 5,000 jobs ranging from entry level to exec. We also had a meeting with the City of Gardner, and we're pulling those numbers together. But it's just good to know, and I guess what I've discovered out there is just trying to find what future growth is, what homes are going up, what job opportunities they are that are in those districts. So it's been real enlightening, and I'll be pulling those numbers together. So we have one last one coming up and including Commissioner Brewer on those, and so we're going to be meeting with Spring Hill. So excited to say that. Yesterday, I had the privilege of attending the commission, Airport Commission Board, and I just want to share with you how exciting the things that are going on at our airport. When you go in there in the next month, you're going to see most of the offices being occupied by leases. So Flora Foods is going to have their executive branch inside those offices. So it's really nice to see, to see that happening. Just also FYI, we had up to six rail cars, and that's a historic milestone from the past. Just so you know, the A4 Navy planes that are out and the historical planes are now going to California to museum. They're refurbishing them, and they're going to be in a museum there. So when you see they're gone, don't think that somebody stole them, they're just being relocated. I, you know, what's really nice is to see that airport functioning more on a revenue and looking at it as a business. So I'm excited for the things to come, and I commend our staff, Brian Johnson and their staff as well. Again, the Carnap program, you know, being so heavily in my district and seeing all the work that's going in there, I can't say enough about KDOT, HNTV, and our staff, planning staff, all working together. You know, they've had numerous meetings, I don't know, I don't know how they keep on top of all of it. And then next Tuesday, Commissioner Ashcraft and myself will be, I'm doing a presentation to the City of Olathe. Also, it is the mayor's, what is it, Mike? Is he 30 years? 30 years on the city council and as mayor? That's it.
Thank you. We'll go with Commissioner Faust next.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick report from the JCDS Board. Mr. Chairman, well, first of all, I want to acknowledge one of the directors of JCDS, Monica Phanis. She has been working with the state to help the state better understand a more equitable distribution of funds for the ADD population. And through her efforts, they have begun to realign those resources. And Johnson County actually is the net beneficiary of almost $300,000 annually. So I just wanted to give Monica a shout-out for those works. And Mr. Chairman, you'll be receiving a letter from the Chair of the Board related to the use of reserves. There will be some additional conversation in that area. And then finally, a quick update on the Shared Living Program. They are making progress, they are in the process of attempting to match individuals with disabilities with potential family and living arrangements. So they're making good progress in that regard. On a more, on a little bit more lighter side, I wanted to acknowledge someone that we often have in this chamber who presents and does a lot of good work for Johnson County, had his 50th birthday earlier this week, and that's Aaron Otto. So Aaron, you're not in here now, but if you're watching, happy birthday, my friend.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Yesterday, I got to meet with the chief elected board of the Workforce Partnership, and we got to welcome Commissioner Brewer as a new member to that board. And the main item was approval of the budget, and very good meeting, a lot of information.
Thank you. Commissioner Brewer.
Thank you. And yes, it was a good meeting, and I learned a lot. It was a full agenda. Just a couple other things that I'd like to share. One, I'd like to commend Johnson County Transit. They recently launched six real-time digital signs at the Mission Transit Center. It's replacing older LED schedule boards. These will have signs that'll have better connectivity, more real-time information. Riders are not reliant on their own data connection, so, and I appreciate that pictures of the new signs were sent along, and they look like that information is going to be very important to folks who choose transit as their mode of transportation to understand what wait times look like and connectivity looks like. So kudos to the Johnson County Transit. Just also, a shout-out to Johnson County Parks and Rec. I had an opportunity over the holiday weekend. I had been on a number of our trails, biking, but not on the Cedar Creek Trail, which is what took me out on Moonlight Road, out in Commissioner Allen Brand's district, but biking that in Lake Olathe, and just impressed with the beauty and the opportunity to get out on the trails and get out in nature. So just my commending them. And then just want to do, I know I kind of sound like a broken record, but I always want to stress, a lot of really robust conversation happens at Agenda Review. That's where we are introduced items that are coming up for action, so we have an opportunity to discuss them, fully vet them, and be ready to take action at business meetings. So I always encourage folks that if they want to know where the conversation is really taking place on a heavy basis and what's coming up for action, to please stay with us for Agenda Review. And then just my kudos to some neighbors who had asked to meet with me in my district around some development issues coming up. Very, very healthy, very good conversation, looking into the future and really centering on pinch points of concern. So I always appreciate being able to have those interactions. Thank you.
Commissioner Hansel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things I wanted to mention today. One is, first of all, I want to thank the staff. Every year during this budget season, they do a great job of strategizing our agendas so that we can focus our time on the hearing from the departments, each department about their budget. So I appreciate that we tend to have a little bit lighter meeting agendas because we have very long and intense budget department budget discussions. Secondly, I wanted to remind people that next week, there will be an opportunity for the public to have input into the potential various options for redistricting the commission districts. Particularly want to mention that the public engagement session for District Four is on Wednesday, June 4th, from 3:00 to 5:00, and the location has been updated to the Oak Park Library. I also want to remind people, because I've had some people asking me about this, that this is not an opportunity for the public to vote on a particular map, it's an opportunity to learn about what the priorities are and state statute requirements for redistricting, as well as to look at some potential options and even to use a tool to perhaps suggest some additional options. But ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners will be making that decision, so I think there may be some misunderstanding that it's a public vote on the maps. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the Mid-America Regional Council's Connected Freight KC Plan. That is the plan that collaborates our regional freight routes throughout the metro area. And it's interesting, I don't know if people realize this, but Kansas City is the second busiest and largest rail hub in the nation in terms of tonnage. We're only second to Chicago. So we have, we have a lot going on there, and I appreciate Mark leading that collaboration. Also, in regard to Mark, on Tuesday, we had our regular monthly Mark Board meeting, and one of the things that I found really interesting was, we had a presentation from the Crime Stoppers Program. And I put, actually gave each commissioner a brochure, and I put some back on the back table. But I learned Crime Stoppers is a nonprofit, it is not a part of the Police Department. And a lot of people misunderstand that and may be hesitant to even call them because they assume it's part of the Police Department. But they actually raise, do fundraisers to raise the money for the awards, and they have scholarship programs, they have programs for victims of crime. So that, I thought that was really interesting, that it is, it is actually not part of the Police Department. And lastly, I'll just mention that we did have a report on the status of federal grants. I think as many people know, the Congress, the House has passed a budget bill, we're waiting to see what happens in the Senate. That budget bill, in terms of impacts on our metro area, would involve reductions in Medicaid funding and SNAP funding. It would end our Double Up Food Bucks Program, which has been very popular across both Kansas and Missouri. You've heard me say this before, Older Americans Act and Head Start funding is at risk. FEMA and Homeland Security funding is uncertain. Fortunately, the tax exemption on municipal bonds appears to be unchanged, and it does include the World Cup funding. So thank you for the opportunity to give an update.
Thank you very much. A brief update, and thank you all for your comments. This week, I was able to meet with the Olathe Chamber of Commerce for our monthly meeting of the Board of Directors.
Exciting times in Olathe. Pizza 51 coming in the next few weeks, after a great kind of soft-launch event at the Fourth Fridays event last week, the next one being June 27th. But it gave me the opportunity also to revisit the 2024 impact on visitors to the Johnson County economy. There was a study that I reviewed from Tourism Economics, it's an Oxford economics company, and in that report, it showed that direct spend of visitors to Johnson County in 2024 was $2.1 billion. When you include indirect and induced spending, that's $3 billion. It supports nearly 25,000 jobs in Johnson County. And when you account for that spending, those jobs, and the business sales, you're looking at $193 million in state and local tax revenue. Now, to otherwise garner that income, you would have to tax every home in Johnson County an additional $790 to offset the impact of the visitor economy. If you like restaurants, say Pizza 51 in Johnson County, 36% of sales at our local restaurants are from visitors to our community. We have built some fantastic infrastructure here, in the middle of the country, and we have a welcoming sentiment to bring folks into our communities and show them good hospitality. Lodging, food sales, retail, that can help grow the base of our economy, help support our state and local governments in a way that allows us to be more mindful about property taxes, which is an issue that we all care about, that we continue to talk about every week here. And also allows us the opportunity to build those other things that we need in our community, like more housing. So I'm encouraged by what we're doing right now with our visitor economy. We have an opportunity to do more, and look forward to working with all partners, public and private, to be able to take advantage of the investments that we've already made in infrastructure and quality of life in our community by welcoming more folks to Johnson County. We will have an Agenda Review immediately after this meeting. We also have one executive session. We will therefore recess this business session meeting, we'll have our Agenda Review, and then we're going to circle back for an executive session. So with that, we'll allow the clerk to change the technology, we'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll restart at 10:30. Thank you all very much for joining us today. We're going to be in recess.